Good evening, excuse me, everyone. It is, what's the date? October 6th. And welcome to the Joint Select Board and FinCom meeting. I want to call the meeting to order. We have Kevin O'Neil, Rob Kimball, Roger Marsan, and myself for the Select Board. Is Denise online, Mr. Town Manager?
She is, yes, she just joined. I am promoting her to a panelist.
Okay, and Denise Luciano? So Bill, go ahead and open yours, please.
Good evening. Opening the October 6th, 2025 Finance Committee meeting. In attendance here would be Tracy, Paula, Gavin, Paul, Zach. I believe Sandy is online. And no one else? Okay.
Okay.
So that is all.
Thank you, sir. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. We are discussing tonight the Fall Annual Town Meeting articles as well as voting or revote on each of them. So let's start with number one. Everybody have their copy? So this one's all set. FinCom has taken action and Board of Selectmen have recommended Article Number One. So Article Number Two, Bylaw Amendment, Chapter 110 Personal Bylaws, Article Two Job Classifications, Section 110-10, and Article Three Salary Plan, Section 110-11. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what this is, is a reorganization of the Town Manager's Office to add an Assistant Town Manager of Administration and Personnel, and to fund that with the same funding allocated for the Assistant to the Town Manager. So it's budget neutral, and it provides a long-awaited HR function that the Finance Committee, the Select Board, Town Meeting has all agreed that this was long overdue. So this reduces legal and compliance risks and provides a level of professionalism that pretty much every city in town in the Commonwealth enjoys. So we're getting up to par on handling necessary risks. Also, it adjusts the schedule, the payment schedule, for the Public Works Director by moving that slightly to reflect market conditions. And the Information Technology Director also adjusts the salary line slightly. And those are all priorities of the town moving forward. They were identified almost universally, DPW Director, which I believe, if all goes well, we'll be able to post that this week. And then the Assistant Town Manager of Personnel and Administration would also be posted. And the IT Director would, we're trying to find a way to bring that online within the next month or two, subject to any questions.
Okay. Any, anyone on the Select Board have any questions for the Town Manager?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Town Manager, the personnel in your office, that is a budget-neutral position. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Denise? Kevin?
No.
No?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we recommend Article Two to Town Meeting.
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second. I need to do a roll call, correct? Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Denise? She's on mute, I believe. There we go.
We can't hear you.
I don't love the technology.
Yes?
Yes. Denise is a yes.
Denise is a yes? Kevin?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. It's unanimous. Okay. Mr. Chair?
Anyone from FinCom have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was just wondering, Mr. Town Manager, do we have a, an IT Director at the moment?
Excellent question. We have a part-time IT person who has unfortunately been hospitalized since I've been here. So we've been really, really, really strapped for IT assistance.
Yeah. Case in point.
Case we didn't notice.
Would this, to be honest, Zoom meetings, and no fault of anybody here, tends to be a little bit lackluster. Will this hopefully improve that sort of thing? Does that fall under their duties?
Precisely, that's my number-one priority. And I spend more hours than I would like to disclose this week on that.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Chair? Zach? I'll make a motion to recommend Article Two as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Sandy?
Sandy is a yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
I too am a yes. That is unanimous?
Mr. Chair? I think Denise tried to speak on Zoom, but there's like an echo or something. They're thinking maybe, Mark, you may need to mute your mic on your laptop to resolve the issue.
I can try that. When I do it, it says it's not recording correctly, so I try to keep it at a minimum volume so it records. I can try it and, willing to try anything, subject to Shane's expert advice.
I'm trying to mute because I'm picking up everything that's in.
We're muted. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. That's Article Two. Mr. Town Manager, Article Three, FY '26 Operating Budget Amendments, please.
So this is a request for $185,000, oh, $185,574 for various supplements to the operating budget, which is not my favorite use of free cash, but that's the position that we find ourselves in. The bulk of it is police overtime that was omitted from the spring Town Meeting with the understanding that it would be put back in the fall. And there are various other transfers requested due to contractual obligations such as union members and other staff who have contract increases, the ability to attend certain conferences that we're contractually obligated to, so.
Can you repeat that number again, Mr. Town Manager? Thank you. Okay. Would that, any of our Board have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Town Manager, this is your recommendation, right? $185,574.
Oh, I apologize. That was an old number I was working off of. It is an even $200,000 because, is that what you're going, because James and I decided that we could add $14,000, the balance, to make it an even $200,000, giving Finance Committee the discretion over $14,500 should we need it between now and the spring. Because, as you know, towns don't have the flexibility that cities have to adjust line items. So if we run into a sticky situation, which I may or may not be anticipating with IT funding, we could come to Finance Committee and request a transfer. So it's an even $200,000.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
I make a motion that we recommend Article Three to Town Meeting.
Okay. Hang on one second, please.
So we need to tell them those two also?
Yes. Okay.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
So thank you. So I was informed that all the numbers need to be read. So the $200,000 is the free cash number. The $205,049, $205,049 is transfers. So that's neutral. That's not asking for any money. That's just transferring money from one line to another, mostly because of maturing debt that we need to pay on bonds. The final item is raise and appropriate because we did not tax to the full amount yet, and there are $467,491 that we're requesting to do that for. Did I get it, James?
Any questions for our Board? No? Denise? No?
Denise has her hand up.
Yes, Denise, go ahead.
So the raise and appropriate, correct me if I get this wrong, James, that is because there are additional expenses, and for whatever reason, the recap when we set the tax rate before, it didn't tax the full 2.5%. So roughly taxed, say, 2.2%, not 2.25%. And we have these other expenses due to an unexpected increase in health insurance and bond interest that equaled the amount of the untaxed money. So we're not taxing more than 2.5%.
More than welcome to speak to it, James, please.
The debt-excluded bonds that we issued in June, June 18th, 2025, it was after Town Meeting, the payments on those bonds will be due, part of it will be due this year. We're allowed to tax over the 2.5% for those because those are debt-excluded, and that's part of the number. And then once we finalize the state A numbers and everything else, we came up with this breakdown, which is the best way to allocate the funds. We are transferring above that from unused short-term debt that we had appropriated in May that we didn't end up needing and netted it all out. But that's why we ended up with more excess levy capacity is because of the debt-excluded bonds.
So the net is $200,000? What are we moving for a number here?
The 200, the three, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one again. The $467,491 is going to be raised and appropriate from taxes. And most of it, it's, that levy capacity is, most of it is from the debt-excluded bonds.
And then the 200, what's that?
The $200,000 above is coming from free cash. And then if you see the 205 in the middle, that's just transferring from the short-term, short-term debt to long-term debt for the most part. And some funds being transferred from payroll in the Treasurer's Office and payroll in the Counsel and Agent Office into those line items.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
What's the number that's going to be on this line item when we go to Town Meeting?
They all have to be read separately. If you see the table that shows Account 001, 132, 502 at the top, the Reserve Fund.
Hang on, does everybody have that? Yeah, it's in your packet. Like halfway through the packet.
Looks like this.
If you go to. Okay. Just want to make sure everybody sees the same thing. So, Mr. Chair, if I'm reading this correctly, the total amount to be raised and appropriated under that article is $467,000 and change.
I don't see it.
So the funding sources, correct me if I'm wrong, James, so this is what you're breaking down for us?
Yes. The $467 is the amount of money going into the
This is it.
Health insurance account, $320,000, interest on long-term debt, $147,491. That's the $467,491. Then there will be $205,049 worth of departmental transfers. So we're taking money from 01, 147, which is the Treasurer's Office, into 01, 155, which is the IT Department, $10,000. That's budget neutral. We're taking it from one department, giving it to the other. And those transfers add up to 205,049.
Okay. I see it now.
Above that, you see $200,000. We didn't have enough levy capacity to increase the budget by $200,000 within the levy limit, so we're using free cash. And they're going into the individual accounts that you see listed above the total. If we were not using free cash and we had levy capacity, the amount would have been to raise and appropriate $667,491. That's how much we're increasing the budget by, in total, $667,000. $200 from free cash, $467 from taxes. And then we're moving $205,049 around within the budget, so it's a net zero effect.
That's probably the clearest way to explain it like that.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would agree. When we go to Town Meeting, you're going to have to explain this because in my many years of doing this, I've never seen anything as extensive as this one. And understanding where the money's coming from, you're going to have to give us some latitude in realizing, you know, I understand what you're doing, but there's a lot of transferring within, and then, you know, transferring the debt and all that stuff included. So I think it's going to be something we're going to have, we're going to have to get up and explain and try to do in a way where people can understand it.
Typically, the Chairman of the Finance Committee will read the motion on the article, and each account is read. You're going to have a lot of fun there.
Yeah. If I may, though, aren't these historically broken into three separate articles essentially, and not?
They're typically within one article. We haven't done raise and appropriate at an October Town Meeting in a long time. But typically, we would have the operating budget supplements being, coming from free cash, and there may be a transfer or two within that same article. The operating budget supplements article allows you to do transfers, raise and appropriate or free cash, stabilization fund, you know, it could come from anywhere.
Read the audience.
I think some of the confusion can be because that, you know, the raise and appropriate, appropriate, you know, the debt exclusion is a, is a new thing. So that hasn't been seen, you know, like this. So that, you know, the employee, and the employee benefits expense, the health insurance.
Yeah, the, the reason why you're seeing the debt exclusion here this time is, in the past, we borrowed the money way before the annual Town Meeting in May, so we would know what the exact principal and interest payment on the particular bond would be. This time, the bond, the bond was issued June 18th, which was after the May Town Meeting, and we were anticipating to have to come back in October to fix it.
Thank you, James. Okay. So Denise, any more questions? Did I clarify?
So I had two questions. One was, I thought, I thought you said we were going to take some money from free cash and put it back into stabilization to offset the money that we use for the school budget? Does the Finance Committee know what I'm talking about?
I think that's coming later.
Yes, yes, that is a later item. We are recommending to replenish $500,000 to capital, stabilization from there.
All right. And the other question, I think, I think the confusion is just, it's just written a little bit differently than last year. Typically, it's all of the, I mean, I can, I can forward you from last year's fall. It's all of the expenses, and then down the bottom, it's just lists the three different pockets or places that comes out of. I don't know if that's what people are used to, but we have had every year, or at least last year, we had raise and appropriate money, we had, we had transfer money as well. It was just, it was just laid out a little bit differently. I don't know if that helps at all for people's understanding of it, but it was definitely laid out a little bit differently.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy. Any questions from Select Board? Denise? Any questions?
Does that mean that we're going to see an extraordinary tax increase this time around because we didn't plan for it in the spring? Or what does that, what's the implication for the taxpayer?
May as well bring a chair up, James.
So this is the last piece of the Town Hall and Senior Center project, as far as borrowing goes. There will be a slight increase on the taxes, and this should be the last one. I don't know what the exact dollar amount would be, but last year, we paid $3.6 million or so for bonds. This year is going to be closer to $4 million, so it's like 3.9 and change. That extra, almost $400,000 would go into the tax base. And going back to what Sandy said earlier, I remember now what she's talking about, and yes, we could have, we could have had all of the operating budget supplements listed to total $667,491, with $200,000 coming from free cash and $467,491 from raise and appropriate. That would probably look better. So we can change that if you want.
I think that would be, what we've seen before, that would be much better. Sure. Please.
So when you guys read the
The motion?
Make a motion to.
Make a motion to make it supplemented $667,491, with $200,000 funded by free cash and $467,491 raised and appropriate. And then the 205,049 is just the budget transfers.
So we need to change the warrant language, you're saying? Or just the way it's presented and organized in the supplemental information? Because I don't think any dollar amounts are changing.
Yeah, dollar amounts are not changing. So it's just the presentation.
Yeah. Phrasing it at the meeting, right?
Yeah. It would be easier to understand.
So the total budget supplement, $667,491, $200,000 coming from free cash and $467,491 from raise and appropriate.
Correct.
And do we need to make the motion that way, or can we just say the Article Three, and then you explain it at Town Meeting that way?
Either or is fine. We could make the motion that way and
Always put the money in, you said, right?
I think the
Pretty sure we're going to have to explain it no matter what.
Way to do it is just to make a total motion for $667,491, and then break it down, you know, the Chair, the FinCom can break it down as he makes the motion. So I'd make a motion that we approve $667,491, Article Number, I lost it, Three. Thank you.
Second. Okay. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? No? Denise?
I just wanted to confirm with James, James, yes or no? You said this was the last time. We're going to have to raise and appropriate for bonds for the exclusion. Is that correct?
Yes. For the Town Hall and Senior Center.
Yeah, I should have, I should have clarified which is the exclusion. Thank you. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. All right. Motion in a second. Kevin?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Unanimous, Mr. Chair, Mr. Town Manager, sorry. And, Mr. Chair?
James, can I ask a question? Is it $667,491, or is it eight and some change with $200 from free cash, $467 from raise and appropriate, and 205 from transfers?
It is not.
It is not?
The $200,000 was already appropriated at the May Town Meeting. We are reallocating it from one department to another.
But don't you have to, that still has to be talked about.
It will be, you will be reading the line items stating, we're transferring from the Treasurer's part-time account to the IT expense line item in the amount of $10,000 and so But we're not adding to the budget, we're just reallocating the budget for that $200 and change.
Right. And I think I see the Chair's point, if I may.
I think it's confusing.
I think we should, we should read it as James says, and then we should be clear that we're asking for $205,049 to transfer from these lines to those lines. I don't think there's any objection.
I don't have an objection to reading it that way, but we have to be careful and not read it as an additional
Right.
We're not, we're not increasing the budget by $800,000. The total budget is only increasing by the six and change.
I'll guarantee I'll mess this up, but
We'll be there.
Yeah.
To witness it now, I'm just kidding.
All right. Anybody else from FinCom?
Mr. Chair? I just have a quick question about the Reserve Fund. What's our balance right now, James?
I believe it's $90,000. I'm not 100% sure. Is it 90 or 100?
I believe 100 was allocated. I'm not sure if 10 was used before I got here.
Actually, give me a few seconds and I'll look it up.
Is this the amount we usually put in? I assume it was going to be like $50,000, but you're adding that $14,000 and change.
We've always put 150,000 every year.
At the Fall Town Meeting?
At, for the whole year, that's what we went up with. Last year, it was 100,000, and then 50,000 was added back in October to replenish it to the 150.
Okay.
And then I believe we ended up adding even more at the May Special Town Meeting, so it was closer to 200,000 by the time it was all said and done. For '26, I know that the full 150 wasn't allocated. I want to say 90,000 maybe, but I don't remember the amount right now. I'll have to look at it.
Yeah, if you could just let me know what this would increase our fund to.
Okay, I'll do that.
I believe it would be 164, 426, but, but we can confirm that.
Mr. Chairman?
Zach?
On an upcoming article here that you guys have is, and I mentioned it to the Town Manager earlier, we're putting 250,000 into Snow and Ice Budget. My recommend, my recommendation would be is to not do that because once we do, we normally put 80,000 every year, and once you do, you can't reverse that in future years. Is that, that's what we were always told.
Exactly right.
Okay, well, that's in your packet here. That's
That's, and I apologize if there's misunderstanding. Those are just buckets to show where we're planning to, in the future, to potentially use the money. We're not asking to appropriate that.
Okay. Because I would say, as the conversation we had is, you know, put it in FinCom reserve, and if you need it, it's available to you, because once you do it the other way, it gets locked up.
Couldn't agree more.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Sandy? You lost that? I'll take that as a yes.
We didn't hear you, Sandy? Oh, my God.
Then the
Sandy?
Yeah, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman? Zach?
What article was it?
Three. Make a motion to recommend Article III as presented.
Second.
Do we have to read, you know, section, section, section?
I recommend that we read where the money is coming from for these supplements, as we have done in the past.
Okay. That's why we stayed on today. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I recommend
So I don't think it's necessary to read every line on the paper, but maybe the three buckets?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, actually, I recommend 200,000 dollars from free cash, and 467,491, raise and appropriate for the two sections. Is that good enough?
Your Chair wanted the transfers. I'm okay either way.
Okay, let's start again. Mr. Chairman? Zach? I make a motion on Article III for 200,000 dollars from free cash, listed items on the article, 205,049 dollars inter inter-budget transfers. Is that the right terminology? Yes. And 467,491 dollars, raise and appropriate.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Sandy?
Yes.
Thank you. Gavin?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
I tune a yes. Unanimous? Okay.
Next up, Article Four, FY '26 Water Operating Budget Amendments. No action recommended, correct?
Yes, we recommend each board vote no action, just so we have the flexibility in case anything happens between now and town meeting, where we would need to ask for something supplemental. We don't anticipate anything to happen. It's only happened once in the history of people's memories, but just in case.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
It appears that FinCom has already taken no action, voted to take no action, so
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I recommend we take no action on Article Four and Five.
Second.
Motion in a second. Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Okay. Article Number Five, FY '26 Sewer Operating Budget, same, no action.
We just voted on that, Mr. Chair.
We did the water one.
I thought we voted on both.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought we had to do them one by one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we take no action on Article Five.
Second.
Motion in a second. Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. Next Article Number Six, Capital Improvements. Mr. Town Manager?
So we are requesting 1 million dollars from free cash into capital improvements. The current balance in capital improvements is 264,000 dollars, and in the next article, we will be asking for various amounts transferred and spent on capital improvements. So this article is 1 million dollars from free cash to capital improvements, the majority of which is intended to stay in the account and be available for the spring.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
If I may make a motion, we transfer 1 million dollars from free cash into capital improvement account.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Denise has her hand.
Yeah.
Yep.
If we don't need most of that capital until the spring, why do we have to move it now? Why can't we wait till the spring?
We, I mean, that could be an option. It typically earns greater interest in stabilization than in free, in free cash. So it would increase our bottom line if we transfer it now a little bit.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would also add, correct me if I'm wrong, that it would look more favorably on our balance sheet and our bond rating as well.
Also very true.
Thank you, Kevin.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would add to that, that putting money back into the capital improvement account is not money wasted. It's going to be used at some point in the game. We have, you know, long-term commitments on some of these capital items, and it's not like we're putting it away somewhere where we can't touch it. We're actually going to have to touch it at some point.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor. No? Okay. Denise?
Hi. Yes.
Yes? Okay. Kevin?
Yes.
Bob?
Roger?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Okay. Mr. Chair?
Anyone from FinCom have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Zach?
Only to make a comment that we've always funded, we always funded this capital budget in the fall historically, so that's pretty normal.
Any further comments? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Zach?
I recommend we transfer 1 million dollars from free cash into the capital account for Article Six.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Sandy? We missed you.
Sandy was a yes.
Sandy was a yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
I tune a yes. That's unanimous for Article Six.
Okay. That's the actual appropriations. Okay. All right, thank you. Next Article Number Seven, FY '26 Capital Plan Amendments. Mr. Chair, Mr. Town Manager?
I thought I had a promotion there for a second.
I wouldn't call it a promotion.
Yeah. The capital plan amendments are what the Capital Committee recommended last week, and they include, I'll just, I can give you this, this, I'll just go line by line. There's not too many. So for for the fire station, the Capital Committee recommends 300,000 dollars from the ambulance receipt account towards the fire station renovation. For the school department, the Capital Committee recommends 24,779 dollars for the stage floor from free cash, and 50,000 dollars for the second exit access road from free cash, and 40,677 dollars for tech displays from free cash. Highway Department requests 8,200 to pay off a Peterbilt dump truck, and that actually saves a few thousand dollars in interest. Recreation is recommended at 24,000 dollars for a playground. Sewer is recommended at 475,000 dollars for a generator from sewer retained earnings, and water is recommended at 41,000 dollars for a 2025 Ford Ranger XL from retained earnings. So the motion we would be looking for would be to consolidate all these, and the total coming from capital stabilization that we just transferred a million to, we would be spending 147,656 dollars from capital stabilization. From sewer retained earnings, 475,000 dollars. From water retained earnings, 41,000 dollars. And from the ambulance receipt account, 300,000 dollars. Subject to your questions.
Thank you, sir. Anyone from Select Board have any questions?
Yeah, one question. The fire station rehab, repair, renovation project, I had read it further in the packet that they had gotten quotes to do the entire project at one, I think it was 1.4 million, all at once, and they had gotten a quote if they were to do it over time with more, maybe in-house support or whatnot, it would be quite a bit more than that. So I know that they're focused on doing it all at once at the much lower cost. My question is, does the 300,000 dollars provide them the money to do it that way? Because I know that both the Town Manager and the Department request was 900,000, according to the sheet. The Capital Improvement Committee want to respond. I don't want to give them not enough money where they can't do the work in an expeditious and cost-effective manner.
So I understand the concern. This would be the third installment of 300,000 that was recommended, bringing it to a total of 900,000, which, as you mentioned, is shy from the 1.2 million. This, actually, this and the school roof were subject to extensive discussions where these projects would benefit from the Permanent Building Committee taking an in-depth look and discussing procurement, and, you know, staying below the 1.5 million threshold for an OPM if possible, and really getting a handle on planning for future capital expenses, which would be a great benefit to everyone. To your point, this might allow them to go out to bid and to do, do design work, and then they could come back if the 900 isn't sufficient, maybe it is sufficient, to do what they want to do. I toured the building late last week, and in my, I mean, I had a construction supervisor's license once, and I do this for far less than 900,000. But, you know, with prevailing wages and your concern is definitely understood.
I just don't, thank you, Mr. Town Manager, and I know your recommendation was that the full 900,000, it was the FinCom that only, I'm sorry, the Capital Improvement Committee, they only approved 300,000. I just want to make sure that we're not restricting or handcuff their ability to do the project in the most cost-effective manner by not giving them enough money in this appropriation. That's my concern.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I'm on the Permanent Building Committee, and, you know, at some point, it does trigger the fact that we should be looking at some of this, and even though I'm looking through the packet, I'm seeing boilers and all this other stuff now that seems to be coming to the service that we haven't talked about before. I would recommend that we stick with the 300,000 at this point, and I know we, the Permanent Building Committee is going to reach out and sit down and have a conversation about this at some point in the very near future. If we should decide that additional funds are needed, then I would, we would probably come back and recommend in springtime that we take another look at this. Another factor that I, again, being on the Building Committee, is we're not sure how much money is left over from the debt exclusion at this point. We don't know how much money is still out there. We're still waiting for the final numbers. We have got a couple credits back that are somewhat substantial. In my opinion, my suggestion would be that if there is money left under the debt exclusion, that we use that money instead of having to take money from available funds and do it, if we can do it under the debt exclusion and still not exceed that, that would be my recommendation to the rest of the committee. So I think at this point, we're more than fair giving up, giving up the 300 grand, but I think we need to wait a bit longer and see if there's any extra money left over from the, from the Permanent Building Committee and the Town Hall, Community Building Restoration Projects. We're not sure yet how much money is left. There may not be any money left. But we, we have to wait and see what that is before we, I believe, before we start spending money from our own available funds and causing further damage down the road by not having that money available.
Yep, and I, and I completely agree. I'm not looking to allocate more money or to, you know, to plead our capital improvement account. I'm just, it's more about timing and not, not cost. And by restricting a request of 900,000 and only allocating 300,000 to last the next seven months, are we building in excess time that's going to end up costing us more for the overall project when it's all said and done? So that's, that's really where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Understood. Two points of note that I do know is they just recently have secured an architect as well. So that's going to take a little bit of time with them ramping up. And if I'm not mistaken, to Bob's point, we have realized a turnback of 175,000, or in the form of a credit, if I'm not mistaken, from the contractor for this property for that walkway out front. Is that, is that correct, James? Or Mr. Town Manager?
So if I may, before James responds, Bob and I are on the Capitol, are on the Building Committee, and that settlement from both projects
Yeah.
We had talked about in our Building Committee, setting that aside for the purposes in which it was allocated. So if we have problems with the front walk, and it needs to be repaired or replaced in the future, having those funds available for that purpose as it was intended is part of the settlement. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, we haven't paid the final bill yet on the project. I believe that is going to be a credit on the final bill, so we're not going to get a check. It's just going to be deducted from what we owe them at the end. And like Mr. Kimball said earlier, we're waiting to finalize the two payments on the projects, on the two projects.
What's the proposed or expected timeline for that? Do we?
No, no.
We don't know?
I don't know.
Okay. Thank you, James. Okay, any other discussion, questions? Denise? Thank you. All right. Any others?
Mr. Chair?
And look for a motion.
I make a motion that we recommend Article Seven as laid out by the Town Manager.
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
Second? Okay. Motion in a second. Any other discussion? We got Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Okay.
So Mark? Access road for Walton Middle School. What is the 33,000 move from whatever they're trying to do there?
The Capital Committee found a more effective way to pave roads. So I believe our water sewer superintendent was part of the discussion. They're, I can't remember how they're more efficiently doing it. Do you remember, Chair, Rich?
I do. So the spec calls for a two-and-a-half-inch binder coat and an inch-and-a-half top coat, and the discussion was doing a two-and-a-half-inch baby binder coat, which was a, was it the number, the 39 or 40,000 dollars, something like that? Correct?
That sounds correct.
And that is a standard that's used. And that is a standard that's used, you know, everywhere. And it saved a substantial amount of money and the twenty-nine thousand and change, if I recall correctly on that. That was the biggest part. And what else? There was another line item on there. Recall, Zach, remember what that other line item was?
No, it was just the top coat. We eliminated the top coat.
Top coat, yeah.
So two inches of asphalt.
Oh, yeah, it was to the recommendation of one of our other department heads of using some of our own resources that we have available for actually doing some of the work, some of the trucks.
So we're not losing any longevity by?
No.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman? Zach? Make a motion to recommend Article VII as written. All right, I guess we'll itemize this. One hundred forty-seven, six hundred and fifty-six thousand coming from the capital budget. Three hundred thousand coming from the ambulance reserve. Four hundred seventy-five thousand coming from sewer surplus. Forty-one thousand coming from water surplus for a total of nine hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Sandy?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
I too am a yes.
Okay. Next article?
Number eight. Okay, so for Barrows Court, the select board already voted. The finance committee just had a question as to a previous appropriation from the town meeting, which was fifty thousand dollars for engineering. The current balance in that fifty thousand dollar appropriation is thirty-nine thousand, six hundred twenty dollars. However, we have an open purchase order for eighteen thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars that Weston and Sampson is requesting payment for. Our conservation agent is disputing the, let's say, the quality, the amount of work done in exchange for that. So it's a potential liability. So I would strongly advise against appropriating that money. That said, there's twenty-one thousand, four hundred dollars left after you subtract that, which I would also strongly recommend we keep in that account because our highway superintendent is planning to dig a two-hundred-twenty-foot trench in the spring, and we very well may use more engineering funds. And it would be highly inconvenient to have to go back and wait till town meeting to ask for those. So the motion I would recommend would be fifty thousand from free cash to the Barrows Court article.
Mr. Chairman? Zach? Is the fifty thousand the amount that the highway department expects to pay? Or is that a contingent cushion or?
Bringing out the big guns for this one.
There's a couple of ways you could look at it. This fifty thousand covers the materials and the cost of a crew to do the work. I think I could do it cheaper, somewhere around twenty-five to thirty thousand, materials being the bulk of it, almost three quarters of it. It would be potentially not necessary to replace the whole pipe, but either way, you're looking at a cost in that range. So we remove the blockage from the pipe. We cleared it of all the major roots. It should function the way it had in the past, given that there's no other, no other causes adding to the, you know, the slow drainage. There's still other minor roots. Regardless, there should be some maintenance work done, if not this year, next year, and then probably periodically. Pedersky was hired to camera and jet the pipe originally. They found the blockage in August. They would probably need to flail that pipe again and jet it to get some of the smaller roots that we couldn't remove. And then at that point, if we don't want to spend the, depending on who does the work, the twenty-five, thirty to fifty thousand dollars to replace the pipe, should probably look at options to line it with some type of plastic liner possibly. The goal is to try to seal up those joints. They're twenty-four-inch pipe and they're four-foot section, so there's something like fifty-five-plus joints. You know, we got the bulk of it. We're going to remove one of the main trees that's causing the issue. There's a line of arbovites, there's multiple other large trees. So some, the plan is something has to be done in the future. I'll leave it up to everyone to discuss, you know, the way they want to do it, to what extent they want to do it. But it makes sense, I would say, to at least have some type of buffer. And there was mention about what was left in the account last time. There was an article that Highway proposed after the West Hodges Street collapse. And we used money out of road materials prior to asking for that article. We used six thousand out of that article. There's eighteen left in there as well. I don't know what format to propose it. It might make sense to put the eighteen and change with the twenty thousand remainder in the article that our conservation had had and just try to get one account to around fifty thousand dollars. So that way we could potentially maintain this pipe, possibly replace it. If it doesn't get used, either probably push it into another account where we could have some emergency fund for other drainage problems like this, because they seem to come up every year more and more. My materials budget is really to maintain the infrastructure that's there. It doesn't really account for adding or changing additional structures. So I just wanted to put that bug in everyone's ear, and how it pans out doesn't make much difference to me.
And are you planning to have this done before this winter sets in?
No, depending on these next few rainstorms, the goal will be to monitor how it performs, which it should perform better. But again, if there's other factors or maybe there's other things that we missed, it might not. And at which point, we should have money available so we don't have to wait all the way into midsummer for the funds to do anything. If we could appropriate something now, even if it does stay separate and we turn it back, just so we have the option to move quickly, you know, come the discovery of some type of problem.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? I know I'm not part of it. I went down and looked at this when we were doing the excavating the other day, and they pulled out something the size of a small mammoth. It was quite a root. In fact, I have a picture, I'd love to show it to you later. Looks like it has legs and everything, but it's actually pieces of wood. But the trunk that they took out of that pipe was amazing that it, you could see why it was blocked. You had two of those, right?
Yeah.
You ended up with two of them. One was smaller than the other. The idea behind it really is, we're hoping that may be the end of it. But if that's not the case, then if come April, we have an issue down there, we'll be able to go back there and do some more if we have the fifty thousand. If in fact it doesn't, if money isn't needed, then we're not going to touch it. And it is earmarked in this special article just for that purpose. So if we don't use it, we're not going to use it. But in our best interest, especially, you know, the people on Barrows Court would, I'm sure, would appreciate the fact that we're putting a few dollars aside just in case they have to do something. Further down on that property, it went into private property, which has a couple of, what do they call those? The pipes and the?
Yeah, thanks for reminding me. Yeah, there's two eighteen-inch culvert pipes that cross a private driveway, which there's no easement and no plan to do work now. But again, having just some type of account with a reasonable amount of money in there to actually do some work, you know, like replace those pipes or enlarge them rather.
And once the culverts are replaced, it goes to the river and then it doesn't back up. So what's happening is the volume of the water coming down the road is coming down so fast. Of course, it was being slowed down by these roots, but once it hits the outpipe, it's overflowing at the outpipe and it's not running off fast enough. So just give them some money also to go down and make some improvements. We may have to talk to the landowner and see if we can make some improvements on the private property also, just so we can get the water out of there. Once the water's moving, it shouldn't be an issue anymore.
Mr. Chair, the, so Jared, the, I'm sorry, you already voted, if you would. So the private property issue, is that, would that be covered under the fifty thousand dollars if it was appropriated?
Assuming there's fifty thousand dollars appropriated and we do the work ourselves, if and when we have to replace the pipe, there would be plenty to replace that culvert as well or improve it or enlarge it.
Okay. In the section that Bob was talking about, that we talked about at our last meeting, you're going to try to replace just that segment that is blocked for now to see if that does the trick?
So that was already completed on August first and second. Yeah, the pipe was, we excavated the pipe, removed the roots and repaired the pipe and backfilled, and that's all completed. So there might be a rain event come Wednesday.
Waiting to see?
Waiting to see, yeah, just watching to see how it performs.
Okay. I just wanted to point out that the new pipe, was the new section thirty-inch diameter?
The new section that we refer to, you mean the replacement pipe?
You did in August, yeah.
In August, alls they did was camera and jet the pipe. They cleaned it out and found the blockage for us. The equipment we used wasn't adequate to find.
Okay, you just cleaned out these. Because I wanted to point out that the difference between the twenty-four-inch, the current pipe and the thirty-inch that you're proposing, if you have to do the whole two-hundred-and-twenty feet, it's only twenty-five percent more in diameter, but it's sixty percent more in area as far as flow. So if you were, if you get to the point where you have to replace that whole two-hundred-and-twenty linear feet, they're going to gain like sixty percent more flow capacity just by that bigger pipe.
While we're on the subject too, it would be like an N-12 ADS pipe, so it would have much tighter fitted joints and there would be a much smoother, you know, flow. Also, there's the pitch, there's about a foot of pitch from in to out in that pipe, and it's not consistent. So I guess, you know, not in theory, if we set a new pipe, it would have one even pitch as opposed to, I wouldn't call it a belly, but there's a, most of the pitch is in the first sixty feet and then it levels out, so it would probably increase the flow and the speed with which it discharges from the street, but minor detail.
Well, my opinion is, let's do it right and so we never have to worry about it again. Replace the whole two-hundred-and-twenty feet, but we'll see. We'll take your judgment and appreciate your cost-effective approach to this.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman? Zach? You had a test drive a couple of weeks ago. We had some torrential rain. So far, so good?
If I'm not mistaken, you can correct me, was that before the October first and second, I think? Yeah, so it was before the?
You said August, so I got.
No, the camera, the camera and the gun was in August, yeah. It did appear to help. It's hard to tell though, because sometime, you know, the water table was a lot lower and the conditions were a lot drier previous to the rain as opposed to times in the past. It becomes a real complicated puzzle, but.
Paula?
Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure I'm following all of these numbers here. So we allocated fifty thousand dollars to the conservation committee to try to do some work on Barrows. They paid Weston and Sampson eighteen thousand, eight hundred twenty, but the work was not sufficient. They're trying to get reimbursed? Did I hear that right?
I would let John Thomas speak to that better, but all that was paid, I believe, was thirty-one hundred dollars for the initial evaluation of the wetlands, like a survey, prior to the full study. So there's a pending invoice for eighteen.
That we have not spent then? We have not given them the eighteen thousand?
Exactly, we have not paid. So right now, the technical balance is thirty-nine and change. It would be twenty and change if you were to pay them.
So you could have the thirty-nine in addition to the fifty if this is, if this Article VIII is also passed to use or to improve the Barrows Court?
Assuming that the invoice doesn't get paid, I don't know how plausible it is either way. I wouldn't speak to it.
And then, so you also mentioned eighteen thousand left over from a West Hodges project. James, if you could remind me, what happens when we've allocated the money to a certain article and then it hasn't been completely spent? That leftover money, then does it have to be voted at a town meeting to be put into a different account? If we wanted to reallocate that for this purpose?
No, the department head in this case, if he's under the highway department, has to notify me before July fifteenth to close it out. And I would be closing it out back to the funding source that it came from. So if it was free cash, it would go back to free cash. If it was funded by the capital improvement account, it would, capital stabilization fund, it would go back to the capital or ambulance, depending on what it is. So technically, the article that we're talking about right now, the fifty thousand, if we appropriate the money and don't use it, and before July fifteenth, Jared tells me, go ahead and close it, I would close it back to free cash, whatever the balance.
So this West Hodges project though, from, I slightly remember a couple of years ago, that eighteen thousand is still just kind of sitting there? It hasn't been closed out to be turned back to free cash?
That's correct. So one option would be to have, to have that eighteen thousand closed into free cash, so that it's available for the next cycle.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair? Zach? On that note, James, could you send us a listing whenever you get a chance of what we have open for past? You know, I know there's some skeletons in the closet from years past that we've approved and it's just sitting there as unused funds. Can we see a listing of that, what's not closed out? And Paula, I believe the article we passed last year was only for design, not construction. So I think that would be problematic if you used it for construction, but I'm not a lawyer. There's one down the end.
Well, we're happy to get any information the committee desires.
Mr. Chair?
Paul?
Jared, I just want to commend you and your department for willing to work to mitigate this at a much lesser expense than if we hired an outside contractor and stuff. And along the same vein, Town Manager, when you did your tour of the fire station, I believe a lot of work was done by the firefighters who are licensed and stuff, again, saving the town considerable funds when you start looking at that prevailing wage stuff. And just want people to know that they get that kind of, employees working for the town that really have the town at heart, so, thank you.
Any further discussion on Article VIII? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman? Zach? I'd like to make a motion to recommend fifty thousand dollars from free cash to Article VIII for Barrows Court.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Sandy?
I apologize, I have to unmute then we can.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Tracy? Paula?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
I too am a yes. Okay.
Thank you. Everything else, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Town Manager. Next ones, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are already addressed.
For the record, Chair, Dr. O'Neal is on standby if anybody has any questions. She notified us this morning that the school department has elected to work collaboratively with the permanent building committee on the roof project, so we'll bring that up in the spring and not at the fall.
Mr. Town Manager? Is that, is this article still going to be in the warrant or gone?
We will remove it from the warrant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So next?
Article fifteen, is that correct?
I have a different numbering, as long as you have zoning bylaw update.
Zoning bylaw update, including reorganizing and making text changes.
So we discussed this at length, most recently at a joint meeting of the select board and planning board, which extended for a good amount of time. In a nutshell, this planning bylaw is generally, the zoning bylaw generally re-numbers everything, adds the sections that were already approved, and makes very minor changes to other sections. And we have our town planner, if there's any questions, I'd ask any questions, maybe be specific. I mean, I'm sure he's prepared with the PowerPoint if everybody wants, but I'd ask for specific questions. However, both boards would like to proceed.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
After extensive going through this, extensively going through this article with the planning board last Tuesday and getting all the answers to any questions that board members had or the public had, I would recommend that the, I would... members had or the public had, I would recommend that the, I would make a motion that we recommend, the Select Board recommend Article 15 to town meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Denise? That's a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Mr. Chair.
As someone who was out of town last Tuesday, I missed the whole presentation. I don't know how many of FinCon members made it?
Two of us, Zack and I.
Would either one of you like to give a brief update?
Are you sure you want my opinion?
We'll go with Gavin first.
Yeah, that's a better idea.
I do want Zack's opinion. From a Finance Committee's perspective, I have no concerns about this. I have one small personal niggel, because you know how much I love housing, but we're not going to bring that up because it has no financial impact.
So is subject.
And I think from the Finance Committee perspective, the one huge benefit will be all the legal compliance aspects, hopefully reducing our legal budget going forward. So that's huge.
My, I have no concern over it. Now, I'm going to try to override the, what the Planning Board did, because they put hundreds of hours into it. But the plan that you guys had to take this to town meeting need to be thrown away and start over. That was, to be polite, a train wreck the other night. I couldn't bear it, two hours, I had to leave. You guys need to dumb that way down, or it's going to be, or you should stop the town meeting at noon time and go to midnight with breaks in between, because that was painful. That was painful. It needs to be dumbed down so people, you know, we can't go line item by line item. People can go online and read it if they choose to at their own time, but I just want to emphasize that, I mean, that, I really have no, nothing nice to say about the presentation the way it was presented. But other than that, I will support it.
Mr. Chair.
Paul?
So, Paul, just a quick comment then, if that's the case and there's only minor changes according to the Select Board after reviewing it, that most of it is just housekeeping, if you will, then why not just present the changes and leave the housekeeping as housekeeping as far as the, to dumb it down, as Zack said, just to make it a shorter presentation? I think you beat yourselves up at every town meeting and that's why you lose.
Paul, does that be the Town Planner? I just want to make one thing, and I'm not sure, Paul, if I'm understanding your question, the proposed bylaw changes, not minor housekeeping, it's a number of things, it's substantive. So we understand though. Last week, we did a bit of a test run and, you know, fortunately, you all were very clear. And that gives us a good direction for a much more streamlined presentation at town meeting. So we'll be doing that. In fact, next Wednesday, I'm going to be doing a public information session for anyone who wants to come. It's going to be next Wednesday at 6 o'clock over at the Nelson Senior Community Center.
Mr. Chairman? I could just, yep, ask some advice, this zoning bywar update that you guys presented to us is very brief, it goes into very little detail. If you put up that 174 pages on the screen, we're going to be there for three weeks. This here pretty much covers what they're trying to do in a very brief way, and I would try to keep that 170 odd pages or whatever it is off the screen as much as you can because it's very confusing. But I think this zoning bywar, you know, update, making a bywar that works with Norton, this pretty much tells the story without getting into the other details.
We will have, I believe we'll, as part of the copies that are made, and it's already up online too, we have a couple of various, two-page summary documents, I think, that do a really good job of hammering home the intent behind.
Mr. Chair, also to Zack's point, I think, I think after the meeting, I think it was a, kind of a test on how to present it, and it failed. By going through the detail of the whole bylaw, I think they realized, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, that the better approach would be, is the one that Mr. Kimble just mentioned, and I believe that Paul intended to do initially anyway, was to go through the summary slides, a dozen slides that highlight all of the changes, and not get into the actual language of the bylaw. And I think you guys learned that from that presentation, if I'm not, if I'm correct.
You are correct.
Okay.
At least we know how to get rid of Zack anyway. So at town meeting, what are we giving the townspeople? Because that's-
I believe the attorney that drafted it will be there to present briefly, hopefully.
Right. We got that confirmed? Presentation, we'll have a couple of small handouts just identifying what the changes are.
But so it's, it's the presentation that Bob and Kevin are kind of showing and not 171 pages?
No. No, no. It is not.
Okay.
I'll move the question, I'm not allowed. So to clarify, it is not the 170 pages that you're answering no to, right?
Right, I believe that's what we, what we had agreed to last, that the Planning Board agreed to last week.
It's all about instilling trust in the town meeting participants, and whenever you have an outside entity presenting on behalf of any board or committee, then you have, take the chance of losing some of that. So I would caution you on using the attorney that's been advising you to do any of this presentation, but again, speak among the rest of the Planning Board and see what they think. That's my opinion.
I'd second that.
So, Mr. Chair. So I actually, I found the attorney's input last spring really valuable. He had an answer to pretty much every material question that was thrown at this, at the change at the time. Can we, can we have him in the back room with a microphone to the Chair of the Planning Board? I mean, is, like, I really, I really did, there were a lot of, you know, compliance issues that I mentioned that are fixed, you know, complying with mass law, to be clear. And I found that he had an answer to everything that the public threw the Planning Board's way. So I guess if we do think having him share that is going to decrease trust, I mean, I would love to have the Planning Board ready to, I'm sure they are, ready to share those things, you know, which specific law a certain change was targeting and what have you, because I found that super, super useful. There was a slew of complaints that sounded valid in isolation, and then there was an answer for each and every one. I think that was really useful.
Right. He adds a lot of value.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Bob?
Again, I would recommend that this be handed out. Do it double-sided, don't have to waste paper, just put it on two sides. Make the presentation and keep it simple, because if you start bringing in like an opening, you know, if you go with this as your opening, and again, put the attorney off to one side, any specific questions can be addressed, the more we talk about it, the more we throw at everybody, the more, it's going to be totally unclear. So the simpler we keep it, the better. And it's a lot to look at, I mean, it's a tremendous amount of stuff to look at.
Right. This is the equivalent of reading your car owner's manual. It really is, that level of detail, and that's what-
Not everyone does that.
Yeah. Go to the book signing for your car owner's manual? So we're going to, I think, just explain the major issues with it, not issues, but the major changes with it. And what didn't change, because there's still a lot of things that stay the same. So I think we've got that covered. I think that's, you know, this is valuable input, and I think we're ready to address it. In fact, the board tomorrow night will be talking about these materials and getting ready for town meeting. So we'll relay this back to them. I think we're already there.
Ms. Luciano?
Some valuable insight last time. He really presented it in an easily digestible, you know, common language way that anybody could understand, very uncharacteristic of an attorney, but he did that very well. So I would, I would honestly advise, I mean, I think the, I think the concept of a subject matter expert is not foreign to people, right? I think if anything, they should be glad that we're reaching out to subject matter experts when we're doing such things like this. But I think maybe you guys present it and have him available to answer those questions in a clear and concise way if they come up, so he can address those specific questions. Just my two cents.
So don't give him a pass on that night, he still needs to show up. Regardless of how you do the presentation, he's got to be there somewhere to answer the questions. I don't know. We voted, so.
So.
You already voted?
You go.
They voted the other night. I think.
Mr. Chairman. Zack? Motion to recommend Article 15.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Sandy?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Zack?
Yes.
iTunes, yes. That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Town Manager, Compensated Absences Trust Fund.
This fund was established approximately a year ago with $1.1 million. What the purpose of this fund is to prepare for unexpected resignations with buyouts of unused vacation and sick time. We've depleted the, some of the initial balance, we're down to $971,842 balance. So we're asking $70,000 be transferred into this account from Free Cash. And there are a couple potential anticipated retirements that would further deplete this account. So the 70,000 we're asking for would bring it back up to a little over a million temporarily until it goes back down.
So this is a $70,000 ask?
70,000 from Free Cash.
Okay. 70,000 from Free Cash. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Select Board?
Yep. Mr. Town Manager, there's Steve Evans from the Finance Committee, he's trying to get on this, I believe Zoom. I don't know if you can let him in?
He can see you, but he can't talk or access it.
Okay, he's a guest, so we are promoting him to a panelist, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
He declined, you need to accept it, Stephen.
Mr. Chair.
Declined again.
Just a question for the Town Manager. Soon as you're done with your IT.
Oh, he's there.
Okay. And now?
He's there now.
Yep.
He's on the screen.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Town Manager, so these buyouts are all built into contracts that we have already with folks, right?
Correct, and all the contracts are up again, so we can revisit that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other discussion? Denise, any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we recommend moving $70,000 from Free Cash into the Compensated Absence Trust Fund, Article 8.
Second.
Second, motion and a second. No other discussion? Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Mr. Town Manager? And then Mr. Chair. So Article 16, do we have any further discussion from the Finance Committee's side?
Mr. Chairman? Zack? What is the balance of this account now? And do we know what our liabilities are that are out there?
I mean, if you add all the employees accrued sick and vacation time, it would-
That's exactly what I'm asking.
Over a million, safe to say.
Okay, so you got, you're close there.
Closer to 2.5, I'm informed, reliably.
Then you're a little short.
Hoping that everybody doesn't retire on the same day.
And again, we're looking to add 70,000?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, can I ask how we came to that number?
So a little more than that was expended. The initial thought was to bring it up to approximately a million, and that would bring it up to a million and 40,000. We discussed just making it an even million, but then we realized that it's likely going to dip below and be used a couple of times in the next month, most likely. So we decided to stick with the 70,000 instead of trying to budget it to the penny and ask for more or ask for less.
And as we, as you, not we, as you, we negotiate with the unions this year, is it not common within municipal government to have a use it or lose it approach to some of these benefits, vacation time, like some private, or most private businesses have?
So the most common approach I'm familiar with is to cap it at a certain point, say two weeks, or whatever you can negotiate with the unions. I believe it's generally six months now, and a couple of weeks sounds much more reasonable for the, for the budget.
And what is it currently? Is it an unlimited accrual?
It depends what union. They're all different agreements. I understand most of them are six months.
Wow.
Going to be fun negotiations if anybody wants to join.
You're going to be great here by this time, aren't you? You ready for a motion? Any further discussion? Steve, Sandy? Steve, if you said something, I didn't hear it.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, it's just, I'm on board with, I think we should try and negotiate the best we can on these items. This is, I know it's a hard thing to do, but this is one of those pain points that keeps drawing down funds for us. It's, I call it the vacation fund, the big house purchase, so.
Okay, you're breaking up a little bit. I'll entertain a motion if there's no further discussion.
I'll make a motion to hire an IT person sooner than later. Because this is a-
Second.
Third.
This is a- Mr. Chairman?
Zack?
I'll make a motion, Article 16, to move $70,000 from Free Cash to the Compensated Absence Trust Fund.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Sandy?
Yes.
Steve? Resonant.
Steve, can you unmute?
Gavin?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Steve, what did you say?
I mean, yes, I keep hitting the unmute button, I'm driving, so it makes it a little bit more difficult.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to, I'm dropping off. All right, this is- I'm dropping off. All right, this is not good. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Be safe, Steve.
Paul?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
I tune me yes. Article 16 passes. Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, OPEB.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief with this one. I'm really excited about this. This is a tremendous opportunity to make a dent in historically difficult to tackle area. We owe $79 million in OPEB liability that's accruing at 5.5% interest each year. So the most we can afford to put toward there at present, we've been making $130,000 plus $5,000 each year. So this is proposed at $330,000. That would have an exponential return on investment. This would save us millions to put $330,000 in there today, and hopefully we can continue that, if not, expand on that in the future. The current progress rate is like making minimum payments on an $80 million credit card. And by channeling more money towards that as much as possible, we're getting, we're seeing a 12% to 18% return on investment. It's incredible, the time value of money, compounded interest. So I strongly advise the committee to take $330,000 and put that toward OPEB this year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is that free cash?
Yes, sir.
You know, we were told when this first came up years ago that we were never ever going to be able to reach those numbers. And they started putting in, every year we put in a minimum, minimum, minimum because of the fact that we thought it was beyond our reach to ever reach that goal. You're coming in with a different spin on it now with the interest and the savings and all that. So, you know, there may be some questions about this at town meeting because we were really getting, we were minimizing this whole process. You're kind of in the background laughing and saying there's no possible way, but you're saying there is a way to do it.
If you ignore it, it'll quintuple in the next four years.
We weren't told that.
If you address it, we can put a sizable dent in it. That's.
Thank you.
There's hope if we tackle it.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask the town manager, and I'm new to this OPEB night, and I noticed that it's for post-employment benefits liability, retirees, health care and life insurance benefits. I get the life insurance benefits, but don't employees when they turn 65 transition over to Medicare? Or how does this work?
They do, but there's a, I was just speaking with our benefit specialists today. So it's mostly for health insurance, and they have something called Medicare B. Where we do fund a portion of that.
Supplemental type of thing?
Right, and they pay 25%, we pay 75%.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from our board? Denise? No, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I recommend we move $330,000 from free cash into the OPEB.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second, seeing there's no further discussion. Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Unanimous, sir. Mr. Chair. Mr. Town Manager, I have a former colleague on this committee who would always vote every year to put in zero. It always used to be an entertaining meeting. And yes, for years and years, we would just put in the minimum plus $5,000 or $10,000. So going from what would have been roughly $140,000-ish to $330,000, I guess my biggest question is, what happens in the eyes of all those credit agencies if next year we have to revert back to $140,000? Because this is a major jump.
They would be extremely happy that we put an extra $200,000 in it. Of course, it's preferable to be sustainable, and that's the goal moving forward.
Right, they're not happy when you go backwards. So that's, I'm not for or against this, but I'm against trying to do this one time and then next year going, we don't have the money for that, we're going back to $140,000. That's my concern.
Frankly, if I could sell the town properties and get a million here, get a million there, and put that toward OPEB, that would be brilliant. We could, if the committee in the town meeting is, the board's willing to do that, that would be great. This is kind of up in the ante. And any extra money would certainly improve the bond rating, our ability to pay less interests, to more effectively have room in the operating budget rather than being bled dry by this year after year. It's, we've been ignoring it long enough. It's time to earn interest instead of pay interest.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Zach?
What did you say our liability is, Mr. Town Manager?
$79 million.
So even your $300,000, what are you proposing, $340,000? A drop in the bucket. How do we ever get there? I mean, that's basically a whole year's operating budget of a town of Norton.
How long do you want to stay here?
I'm just, you know.
There's, other towns have done what's called an annual required contribution. So every time you add ahead, you budget for the amount of OPEB, future OPEB that employee coming on the payroll is going to cost. And so you're stopping the bleeding, but also catching up to your liability. And at some point, you flip that where you're not just bleeding from the 5.75% interest we're paying a year, but we're also gaining. Last year, the market, our OPEB count did 12% gain. So it flips it on its head. We're making 18% on this money. If we put in half a million dollars in the next 10 years, that would make a potential $30 to $50 million dent in it. And then we're putting in, you know, $5 or $10 million. It's incredible that if, and I will plan to budget to sustain this, even if it means budget cuts, because we've been ignoring this for decades. We need to live within our means.
That's going to be my next comment. Come the spring, town, spring, when we're sitting here in the spring, it's going to be some challenging times. It's been challenging, you know, splitting hairs over a dog catcher and, you know, funding the senior center and late night battles over $10,000 and $5,000 and many hours. Now we're adding a couple hundred thousand of this. We decided to give, you know, the seniors $150,000, $140,000 deduction. You know, I just said how many positions, one, two, three, I'm counting three positions that are going to have, at least three positions that are going to be gone this spring. And then you have what we've already discussed in this, in this meeting. You know, you've got union renegotiations with all the unions, the teachers operating with our contract. I see it a very rough, rough road ahead come the spring. That's just my only concern and my caution to everybody.
And understood, and planning for the future is really the only way to go, to get out of the hole that we're in.
Okay, any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion. 17.
Mr. Chairman?
Zach?
Recommend. Is it $340,000? $330,000 out of free cash to Article 17, post-employment benefit liabilities.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Sandy?
Yes.
Thank you. Gavin?
Yes.
Tracy? Paula?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
I tune me yes.
Mr. Chair, after the vote, I just wanted to point out to finally understand this interest thing. And of course, the stock market, who knows if it's going to continue to provide 12% returns. But that $300,000 that we just added to this account, even if it's a 10% return, that's another $30,000 a year that goes back into this account, right? Minus the 5% we're paying out or whatever the case is. So I can see that it can help it grow. I'm just baffled that supplemental Medicare adds up to this much for a small town like us with the number of employees that we have. Maybe at some point I'd like to see all the numbers behind it because it just, it does, it baffles me, like.
This might make a good future agenda item to have, you know, I believe we have 400 employees and we pay 3.5 million each year. I can't do that quick math right now, but.
And maybe that's something in the future that we look at, like negotiate a buyout or something. I'm not quite sure how we reduce our liability long term, but something for a discussion another time. But thanks for bringing this to our attention.
My pleasure.
Next article is stabilization. Mr. Town Manager.
So the recommendation here is $750,000. It's not quite the $1 million we would have, somewhat have liked, and it's not the, just the 500 returning that we borrowed for the school budget. It's a happy medium. It's the most I feel that we can responsibly put into savings. It's, for the very, for the record, it's very good to put money in savings and good for our bonds, good for our credit, good for proper planning. So $750,000 seems to be the right amount at this time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions from select board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Town Manager, so this $750,000 that is a positive impact on our bond rating?
Yes, sir. Any positive balance in stabilization goes toward our unallocated funds balance, which is very, that's the number one factor in our bond rating. Thank you. OPEB's a close second.
Mr. Gold, what's the present balance in that account?
It's toward the end of the packet. Let me just flip there.
Yeah, we do have a sheet on that.
4.3 million, so it's $4,322,477.
I have it, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from select board? Not, no.
Mr.?
Take a motion. Yes, sir.
I recommend that we move $750,000 into the stabilization account from free cash.
Second.
Motion and a second. Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Unanimous. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair. Thank you. Again, Mr. Town Manager, you know, two years ago, we did a million. Last year, we did a million five. Now we're dipping to 750. This isn't going to raise eyebrows that, hey, you're slipping.
It's a positive thing that we're putting money into stabilization in the last few years. It looks like the balance has been consistently going up, so it's not going up as high as it did, but free cash isn't as high as it would. So it's actually roughly the same percentage of free cash that we're putting towards stabilization.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I recall, I believe it's the gold number is around, right around $5 million is where we're supposed to be. All these years, we haven't been there, but now we're near where we're supposed to be. So bringing it back up just over five is probably in our best interest, especially when it comes to borrowing money. We're getting ready to do some major borrowing and a couple of major debt exclusions, so it could be helpful.
Anyone from FinCom?
Just a quick question. The stabilization account also receives gains with interest. What was, you said OPEB was a 12% gain last year. What was the stabilization account with the interest?
Good question. We adopted the Prudent Investor Act, which allows a more, you know, slightly more aggressive for governments' investment policy. I believe it was around 5%, a little over 5% is that? Right, so recently, savings accounts and municipal investment accounts have both been around the same 5%, which is good for savings, maybe not ideal for investments. But the OPEB, I guess, is more aggressively invested because it's a more long-term account. Stabilization has to stay more liquid, so a little over five.
Okay.
And I don't believe everyone heard, but James says to keep it liquid.
Right.
Which is a major component of that.
Oh, yeah.
Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chairman?
Zach?
I make a motion, Article 18, stabilization fund for 750, for free cash.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Sandy?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
I tune me yes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. So I believe that concludes the presentation, everybody. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Denise?
I think so.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
We are adjourned.
We are adjourned.
All right, now we can talk about you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
No meeting tomorrow, no more meetings before town meeting. You don't anticipate us needing to revisit any articles. We're good.
So Mark?
Yes, sir.
Are we, tomorrow's going to be canceled?
I mean, you can come if you want. You and I can hang out and play cards or something.
All right.
Yes, that's, yes, it's canceled tomorrow.
And so no other meetings ahead of the town meeting? We're good?
I mean, you're welcome to come to the select board meeting Thursday.
Oh, man, all these meetings.
Those are fun. Next Wednesday.
I would like to thank all the volunteers for their countless hours. These two boards primarily have spent a lot of time in service to the residents, so thank you heartfelt. Planning board as well.
Planning board always. So if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Zach?
Make a motion to adjourn. This fall 2025 FinCom session.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Sandy?
Yes.
Gavin? Tracy? Paula?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
I tune me yes. Thank you.
Hey, it's great to be a stranger. Great seeing you guys.
Needing adjourned. 8:20.
It's been real.